We call the meeting to order. For the record, this is the January 24th, 2017, meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board. Adequate notice this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board, by sending a copy to the Courier-News, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. The vice for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Melonowski?
Here.
Mr. Mahalker?
Here.
Mr. Sandow?
Here.
Councilman Ray?
Present.
I'm sorry, Committeeman Ray.
Present.
Long form of government. Mayor Schuler?
Here.
Vice Chairman Hans?
Here.
And Chairman File?
Here.
And for the record, Kevin O'Brien, Tom Lemanowitz are also present, and the Board Attorney is not here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
We have a quorum.
Great. There will be no need for an executive session this evening, so we'll move on to the, to the next item on the agenda, which is the, the resolution for indoor soccer. Nancy, could you briefly tell us what the Fire Chiefs report was today and bring us up? You had the wording that he provided.
He re, he revisited the site last night. I would, I would not want to quote exactly. If you give me a second, I'll pull up the email.
Sure.
This is what he suggested, because these are recent revisions, which have not been vetted yet by the applicant's attorney. So our attorney shared the revisions, and I would expect that you'll move the resolution at the next hearing. There was a question about the fire lane, whether it was required, whether it had been required during your, during the hearing. So, the suggested revision is to condition number 13, which would eliminate two parking stalls to provide paved vehicle access to the soccer field adjacent to the dome on a path running from south to north on the eastern side of the dome. See why I didn't want to?
Okay.
Quote that from memory.
No, that's fine.
So Attorney Bessonio is checking with his client on the language. That was the last we heard.
Okay.
As of prior to our 6:00 PM meeting.
Mr. Lemanowitz, just a quick question for you.
Yes.
What Chief had asked for was just access, you know, paved access to get to, to get to the dome. Is that area paved now from the street to the dome?
No.
Okay.
And I believe that that entire area is either within wetland or within transition area, so that would have to require a permit from the DEP to put a paved access in there.
Okay, so we've got further work to do on this.
No, I think if you, the Chief Phillips was, you know, came tonight, and he's, he's willing to come and answer questions, certainly, but since we were continuing, we, yeah, we, he said that he didn't need to stay for it, but I think whenever, you know, we can continue the dialogue with him, because all he really wanted was to have access for emergency vehicles along the, along the side of the dome. Paved would be great, because you don't want to, they're, they're expensive vehicles, and you don't want them disappearing. But, you know, I think it's, it could very well be that, as we said tonight, that he, that that area may not be pavable, and, and, and in that case, you know, we can talk to him in the off time about, you know, do you, do you take your chances on the, on, on the weather?
Now, the other, the other possibility is, is a permeable pavement, or what they call a grass paver, which is a reinforced, they reinforce the soil under the, under the grass. I don't, I could, I could ask the applicant's engineer to look into that and see what the DEP thinks. And in that case, what you do is you put the grass pavers in, and you just need something to delineate where they are, so the trucks know, you know, don't venture off this line. I could ask them about that. I can look into that.
Okay. Are we making this more complicated than it has to be?
Well, this is a new request. It hadn't been out there before.
Well, I mean, it wasn't really a new request, right? Because we talked about, whenever the applicant was here, we had talked about emergency access for vehicles, and I actually took up a reasonable amount of the conversation. I mean, I think, you know, we, we sent it back to the chief today, this week, because of the question about the fire lane, because that hadn't been discussed, and so, you know, we, we started to look at exactly what the emergency lane would, would look like by the dome, and that's why we're, you know, it turns out paving would be good, some kind of gravel might be, might be okay, but now we're really looking at it to realize that perhaps you can't do anything there. And, and I think we have to, it's a conversation that we have to have with the chief. What does he think about that? Is, is that acceptable to, to him? And, I mean, he's certainly open to, to that discussion, and we can get this taken care of, I think, by, certainly by the next meeting.
I think that's probably the?
Because I mean, yeah.
Right thing to do, breath and gas.
Yeah, and the last thing we want to do is, is complicate it, and I know what you're, I know what you're saying, Alan.
Right.
It seems like it's, it's kind of coming out of left field, but, but it's something that we discussed at the lens.
It morphed from putting a fire lane in the parking lot to presenting, keeping open a couple of parking stalls. It's like you get on the field, but then once they're on the field, what do they do? So that's a major problem.
So then we're going to continue action on this resolution, and Mr. Sandow?
Do we have in the record whether or not the skin of this inflatable dome is fire resistant, fire retardant, fire anything?
They testified something like that.
There was some discussion, because they had a fire.
And it's very difficult for it to burn or something?
Yes. It kind of melted more than it burned, because of the air pressure inside, the smoke never accumulated inside, it kept getting pushed out, so it was really, they had like time to wander around, and, and, there was, there was some testimony.
It, it seems to me that fundamentally, if the dome itself, if the fabric of the dome catches fire, you're going to wind up with a hole in an air-supported dome, which means the dome is going to collapse, and you're now going to have a ground-level fire. The dome obviously won't stay inflated with a large hole in it, and so, the, the entire strategy of fighting the fire, if, if in fact, the skin of the dome is flammable, if it's not flammable, then we don't have the opportunity for a structure fire, and the, if there is a fire, it would be an interior fire, and that doesn't require perimeter access. In other words, I think we need to have the, somebody explore, either, either you, Tom, or the fire official, or whatever, explore the reasonable scenarios before we get into the question of more impervious cover.
Yeah, Dennis, you're, you're absolutely right, and I was part of the conversation, I think, over the next couple of weeks, is, it's, what are we, what would be, be more than likely dealing with there? And, you know, as I say, would it be great if we could just pave it? That would be the best thing, because then you can get an ambulance in there, for instance, if there's, so it's, it's, it's not just fire trucks, but it seems that that's not the, that's not that easy to do, and to kind of move this along. I think the next, the conversation with, with Chief Phillips is to, is, is, is along those very lines, as to what are, what are we likely to be dealing with, and is it, you know, can we take our chances with, with the weather being such that we can bring an emergency vehicle in there if we, if we need to? So, I, I agree.
Yeah, and it was, it was certainly related to ambulance or emergency vehicle, as opposed to just simply fire engine.
Yes, that's right.
Didn't we accommodate the ambulance by creating a driveway as far as an airlock by the main entrance?
Well, that was condition 14 here. Add emergency vehicle access to the dome and the field from the parking lot, noted as potentially eliminate two parking spaces.
I think we're talking about the same, yeah, same thing.
And I think what the, what the, what the chief wanted was additional wording in 14, and then eliminate number 21, which was approval of a fire lane by the fire department.
That's right.
I think that was the idea, so we'll have to clarify that.
We can clarify it, and?
All right, so let's move on in the agenda, then, if everybody's, if everybody's satisfied with that.
There's, there's a couple of minor word changes here. Shall I just go back to Dan with those directly?
Yeah, I would, I would, sure.
Chair, want to take a motion to, uh, hurry the resolution to a date certain?
That's fine.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Voice vote?
What's our next meeting?
Uh, February 7th.
Fourteenth.
I'm sorry, February 14th.
Fourteenth, Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day. So, voice vote, or do you want a roll call, Mr. Jones?
Pardon me? Voice vote is fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. At the suggestion of the, of the vice chair, we want to move item number six ahead of item number five, which is, which is the application hearing for, application number 15, there's 04P, De Silva. So we have an applicant here for this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just come forward and let us know what your intentions are.
I think you, David, and I are gone, if we're here, we actually leave.
The chairman, I think. He's just making a statement.
Yes.
And he's not, it's not enough.
Okay. I'm just going to make a statement. Good afternoon, my name is Ed De Silva. I'm the applicant for 219 Bungalow Terrace in Millington, New Jersey, and I had a application for the planning board to pave the driveway and a variance for a shed that was encroaching on the property line and a couple of other paving items. Upon receiving the questions from the planning board engineer and stuff, we have to go back with my engineer and do some recalculations and everything, so I'd ask for an adjournment to be carried for at the, hopefully, the next meeting or the following meeting. Would give us time to get everything in order.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I received a request for adjournment and extension of time from Mr. De Silva.
To?
Request, we initially had it until February 14th, but we do have a Goddard scheduled for that evening, so I asked for, and someone had represented to him that, even prior to that, that February 28th would be his new meeting date.
Is that acceptable?
But we have an extension of 28th.
Okay. It's acceptable to you to, to postpone till the 28th of February?
Yes, sir.
And you've signed that?
Yes, I have, I have the signed, signed document from Mr. De Silva, and with an extension of time, I asked for through March 31st.
And the 28th is available, just nothing else? It's a little unclear, I'm sorry.
No.
Well, he's first on the, on the 28th, unless?
Yes, he would be, yes, there, there are other things in the works, but he'll?
Okay, that's fine.
Nothing efficient.
So, we don't need a resolution on this, we just to make an announcement that, that the De Silva application is hereby continued to the February 28th, 2017, planning board meeting without any additional public notice required. So, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks, Ed. You too. You too.
Is anybody in the audience here for that station?
Oh.
Can I be able to address an answer question?
Please, you could come up to the microphone, please, ma'am?
We're not hearing that station.
Are we voice voting the, the motion to?
We don't, we don't need a motion.
We're not, uh?
Okay, so I guess my question would be, would that, um, motion, would I ask questions about that, or should I ask questions at the next meeting? Would I address it here, or?
We don't have an application as of right now. The application is continued.
The application for the paving of the driveway would then be approved at the next meeting?
The application for the entire, you know, the entire application with, with all of the, with all of the different pieces of it, will not be heard tonight, and will be heard on or after February 28th, depending upon further action, but right now it's on the, on the calendar for February 28th meeting.
Understood, so do you, should I voice, like, are concerns and questions today, would you like, or should we carry them over and?
Wouldn't be appropriate now, because we don't have an application.
Okay, agreed, so what would the date be? Would you mind?
28th, February 28th. And if you want to be sure, you can check our website, our agenda's put up a couple of days beforehand, to be sure that it's there, or you're free to call Ms. Probst and check with her.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move back now to item number five, which is the noticed hearing for the master plan, specifically a reexamination of the Valley Road Business District element, which was adopted back in September, I believe?
September of 2015.
September 2015, correct. Mr. O'Brien, can you walk us through the, the events that, you know, have taken place on this?
Chairman, as you indicated, in September of 2015, the planning board adopted the downtown Valley Commercial District element, establishing a BD zone within the township of Long Hill. All of the properties along Valley Road, running roughly between Morris Town and Main Ave, were included in that zone, purpose of which was to have one single commercial downtown zone that would include all of those commercial properties. After the master plan element was adopted by this board, a set of ordinances accompanying that element was sent to the township committee. The township committee in a back-and-forth with the planning board, and the committee revised those ordinances over time, and they were adopted by the township committee on the 30th of November, 2016, just a couple of months ago. In the course of the discussion between the township committee and the planning board, one of the suggestions of the township committee was to allow residential above the first floor of buildings, just like it is allowed currently in any of the village or hamlet zones in the township. And the actual wording on that was to prohibit it, prohibit all residential uses on the first floor. That discussion was held by this planning board last July, at which point it was decided that the board did support that, and that at some point in the future, the element would be revised to reflect that thinking. After the township committee adopted the ordinance in November, we realized that that wording, the time to do that was now. Mr. Sandow graciously joined in with the chair and I in making some revisions to the element, some of which were grammatical, some of which corrected a few things, but the primary change in it was to echo the wording from the township committee concerning that residential use. I passed out to the board both a track changes document, which did show the various changes that were made, minor in number, and a clean document. And taking a look at the document, one of the changes is on page five, under item three, number one, and that change in wording is put there in order to echo the township committee. On page six, item six, number 10, we identified an abbreviation, so that it would be clear as to what that was, and we had some clarification wording on the maps that accompanied the element at the back of the, the back of the, at the back of the element itself. So they're fairly minor, but they do coordinate this document with the document adopted by the committee, and in keeping with the discussion that the planning board held last time.
Kevin, can you just go over the three of them? Because I don't have the changes.
Okay.
Exactly where they are.
Certainly. On page six of the clean copy, and the file name on that, all the way at the, on the last page at the bottom, says downtown Valley Commercial District element, V5 for version 5, 011917. And in that version, going back to page six, number three, community improvements, item number one. We added the phrase "on the first floor" to that number. So that specifies that no residential uses will be allowed on the first floor, in keeping with the planning board and township committee discussion. The next one is a clarification, and that's on page seven, item number six, number 10, last word, second sentence, we spell out floor-area ratio abbreviated by FAR.
Okay.
Try to make it clear. Page nine, appendix, number A, maps. We took out a word to make it clear that those are the ordinances in effect on the 1st of September of 2015. And that's it.
Now, there's one other one.
Okay.
It's on, it's on the, the page that talks about zoning changes.
Okay.
And it's item number six, define a limited industrial overlay zone, LIO, and, and that should, in the ordinance that was, that was passed, it was, was called, was renamed the VIO.
Right.
That is inversion, that correction is in version five.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you?
But that hasn't been, but that hasn't been adopted yet.
Right.
Okay, as long as it's in there. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't print out either of those.
Okay, and you're right, that was one of the changes that was made.
Okay.
We were trying to make a deadline for the county, so there were a couple of versions of this flying around.
Sure. One other minor, I have just a question more than anything else. It's, it's in that same VIO, does the current version say the only, that last sentence in point number six, "The only permitted uses shall be those in existing currently garden supply warehouse, small-scale manufacturing, and small-scale construction?"
That is correct.
Okay. The, the, the ordinance that was passed added small-scale warehouse or logistics uses, as opposed to just warehouse, and it talked about small-scale manufacturing and assemblies, as opposed to small-scale manufacturing. as opposed to small-scale manufacturing. I think it was just, just to broaden it a little bit. And then they added all primary uses permitted in the BD zone, which is automatic, I would think.
It is.
Right, yeah. If they're permitted in the BD zone, they're permitted in the overlay, so we don't need to have that in there. But those are the ones that I wanted to just, to just clarify. I think, I think the intent was, was always there, but we wanted to just clarify it.
I've noted those of the boards in agreement.
Okay, that's fine, that's all, that's all I have. Any other questions from the board on this? Questions or comments from the public on, on this, this element?
I don't know if you've lost track or not, but at page, Roman three, Recommendations, where it says 17 meetings between September and March.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that number isn't quite a bit higher, if we were to calculate it through to today.
Thank you, Dennis, that should be removed, because that was the original 2015 adoption. Thank you.
You want to take it out rather than recalculate it?
Yes, take it out.
We could say that there were three meetings since last July and now, if you want it to be...
How about, how about numerous?
Yes.
It doesn't matter.
Quite a lot.
What's the word for excessive?
Numerous meetings? Since July and now?
Take it out.
Take it out.
Take it out, doesn't matter.
Take it out.
Take it out.
So could we have a motion to approve this, this revision of the, of the, of the element?
Just one minor, minor thing very much. On the date we took the, on the last page, under one, you can just put a space or put 1st of September, the one in September, run them together.
What page do you want, please?
The map.
The map?
You might, if you say you took something out, just a minor, so minor.
What's the correction?
As of one blank September, or 1st September, whatever it may be.
There's no space between one and September on his version.
Oh, yeah, I have it in mind.
Okay.
I'm sure it's still there.
Thank you.
Good. So, when you have a motion?
Still moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Chairman, your motion would then be to adopt this element of the master plan, to provide notice of the adoption of this master plan to clerk of Morris County, surrounding Township clerks, as well as to provide this element to the Township Clerk, place it on the website, and otherwise make it available to the public.
Do we leave anything out? Okay, good. Nancy, can you call a role on this, please?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalker?
Yes.
Mr. Sandow?
Yes.
Mayor Schuler?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Committee Man Ray?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hans?
Yes.
And Chairman File?
Yes. Thank you, Wolf, that's a 9-0, that's, that's great, doesn't get any better than that. Before we get, I guess, at new business, Mr. O'Brien, you've, you've been diligently working on something that was discussed earlier this evening?
Chairman, earlier this evening, at the direction of the mayor, along with the Township Administrator, a land use efficiency committee meeting was held, which discussed the completeness review escrow deposit, and how, under our newer reforms, which included technical review and checklist review, meetings occurring in order to deem an application complete, rather than holding technical elements for a hearing before the board, thereby saving applicants' time and money, we found that the escrow does not keep up with the amount of work that's being done in the name of completeness, because so much more is front-ended in order to save the applicant's time later on before a hearing. And the consensus at that meeting was to ask the board to consider an increase in that escrow deposit from the current $675 to $1,800. That is in Section 182 of the Land Use Ordinance, item number one. If the board were in agreement with that, a motion could be made that would recommend that change to the Township Committee. A resolution would be sent to the committee, and then it would be up to them to introduce it, send it back to you for your master plan performance review, and then for their possible adoption and formal action at a second reading.
And the rationale for doing this?
The rationale for doing this is that currently, a number of applicants, particularly those with some complications to them, are taking much more money than is allocated in the escrow deposit. Engineering and planning are now done in the completeness stage, in order to get those issues out front and deal with them before the board sees them at a hearing itself. So because of that, and because of at least one technical and completeness review committee meeting, occasionally two, there is more money being done upfront in that completeness determination. And of course, since that work is being done upfront, there will be fewer costs at the back end, because so much more of that process has been gone through prior to completeness, which means less cost for an applicant in terms of hearings, that they won't be at a hearing for as long as they are currently.
That makes, that makes sense. Certainly any application, by the time they get through, to get to and through a meeting is going to spend significantly more than $1,800, so it's not unreasonable to, you know, ask for that money sooner, as, so as to, to improve the flow of the, of the application process. I think that was a determination that I heard, that it makes sense.
Yeah, and the number $1,800 was based upon evidence of prior applications over the course of the year or so. Nancy?
Yes.
Maybe, would you want to add a few more words, or?
I did a sampling of...
Can you speak under, in the mic?
I'm sorry. A sampling of applications from this year and last, some of which are still active, or still haven't come before you for hearing, to assess an average of the amount that it took to get up to the hearing. And that ranged from $1,400 approximately, up to $3,000. So, in the middle of the road was kind of where we were going, but that's...
Okay, thank you. So there's evidence behind the number?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Very good, thank you.
And this would apply to both residential and commercial applications, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't differentiate between the two, correct?
No, it's the same clause for all applications.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
For the rest of the board that wasn't in the meeting, so we, we've taken a look at 12, the last 12 applications that had an escrow. Thank you, Dennis. And 10 of them wiped out the escrow just about in the first transaction, requiring a replenishment almost immediately after one of the professionals did their work. So, it, what we're seeing is it bouncing back and forth between escrow deposit, professional charge, having to replenish the escrow deposit, professional charge, having to replenish the professional, the escrow deposit again, and that, and that ping-ponging introduces sometimes some latency, because Nancy has to call up the applicant and basically get more money, right? And then they have to come in and give us, give us the money and to let the, to cut the professionals loose. So, the feeling of the committee was that, you know, that this is not a price increase, right? The applicant is paying the fees anyway, the fee structure is not changing, it's simply a case of us having that money so that we can let the professionals do the work that needs to be done to make that application complete for the board.
Good point, thank you. Any other comment?
Is the, is the town prepared to refund the escrow excess with as much rapidity as we ask them to please refresh their escrow? I mean, I've seen escrow refunds on the agenda that are years old, and we're finally getting around to giving them their money back.
We had a hearing which did not come to, no, it did not come to fruition, and his application, his escrow has already been processed, so unwound in November, takes some time to make the referral over to, you know, the CFO, confirm the balance, our professionals have to confirm that they have no further billing, no outstanding receivables, and then the Township Committee was on their agenda, he's getting his check Thursday. So, there's a process formally that the applicant's supposed to, by law, they're supposed to request it, be a certified mail from us, but if, you know, with, knowing that the application was done, same idea for the school over on Valley Road. They had a site plan, and now they have a revised site plan. So I facilitated the escrow, we moved, or consolidated them, so that we don't have escrows hanging out there that we're done with. Our professionals confirmed that they're done billing against it, so it's, it's a matter of how quickly I can get them...
Do we provide a periodic accounting? Or do we just tell them, send us another couple thousand dollars?
To the applicant?
Yes.
The applicant receives advice copies of everything that's billed against that account from each professional respectively. So the board attorney, if they have an attorney representing them, board attorney sends a copy of that bill that's going to come to me to be posted against it. So they're advised of every charge that goes against the account by the professionals themselves. If they were to call me, I keep backup copies of every bill that goes against my...
We don't just send them a monthly running total?
We can, we can, yeah, the CFO can do that, and, and under the land use law, they're entitled to accounting, and they can request it at any time they want it. Mine is just a spreadsheet, it's a little less formal. The CFOs may not be as current as my accounting, because I'm the one doing the processing, so his, sometimes the software can take a little while to catch up.
And the whole handling of the escrow is laid out, I mean, this is...
Okay, thank you for that comment, Nancy, appreciate that. Do we have any comments from the public on, on this process? This change?
Alan, I just have one comment. Have we polled other towns with respect to our schedule for applicant fees? Are we competitive? Are we low, medium, high compared to other townships?
Mr. O'Brien, want to take a shot at that? Since you know other towns?
Escrows have been studied here in Long Hill for at least the last 10 years, and there have been three or four complete overhauls that I recall, and each one of those was done to try to make the escrows more in line with what the actual costs were, as well as two of, of at least three of those reviews were also done by taking our surrounding towns and getting their checklists, comparing it to ours, and seeing if we were out of line, in line. And over the years, this has been retooled several times, so that has been one of the many considerations that has gone into it in the past. The last iteration reviewed our escrows and fees in the context of what applicants were paying here, to try to make it more real, so that we weren't charging too much, we weren't charging too little, and try to find that middle ground where an application and an escrow cover most of what a normal application would be. And again, caveat that there's no such thing as a normal application, because they're all different, they're all exceptions to, to the rules, so you never quite know what you're getting into. But because of the various categories we have, for site plan categories, use variance categories, we try to show that where more work is involved, like site plans, commercial site plans, or use variances, that because there's more work involved, those numbers are higher. So, we're a little long to say...
So you're establishing, you're establishing factors that go into the calculation of that fee?
That has been done, yes, thank you.
And aren't we a little unique in that we have a planner, an engineer, and an attorney, all reviewing applications, as compared to other towns? And the reason I ask that is I have, I have a client right now who's going for an applicant, filing a board of adjustment application in West Caldwell, and it's $450. And it's $150 application fee and a $250 escrow.
And what's the application for?
Front yard variance. So I guess, I'm, I'm, the question is, I guess we're unique, and I mean, the only person they have looking at is an outside zoning official.
And there's no further review after that?
No further review after that.
Every town has a different philosophy towards these things. In this general area, most towns look at applications thoroughly, and they want to review an application for impact upon property values, impacts upon adjoining properties, as well as the character of the community. There's some towns that, I can name a few towns where they go through, I don't want to name it, one town in particular goes through 20 bulk variances in 15 minutes. But then what does that do to the character of your community and the impact of those improvements on your name?
And as far as the staff, every board has its own, I serve on a board where they have the board engineer, the board planner, the board landscape architect, and occasionally they bring in the board's own architectural consultant, plus the board attorney.
Plus traffic.
They, well, the one person is traffic, it has two titles, but yeah, but you get four different professionals, which I've never seen that. I've seen planner, engineer at most, most of the boards, I would think.
I think that's a, I think that's a valid observation that, that could be part of a, of a, of a process review, but at this stage, that doesn't impact the fact that right now, we're, we're delaying applications because we're, we have to collect and recollect escrows.
Yes, I'm certainly not saying it, it isn't warranted, that's for sure. I mean, I, we're, you guys are very valuable.
No, I think, I think you have a valid observation that, 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 that could be looked at in terms of, of, you know, is our process, is all of our process necessary? But at this point, that's the way we, that's the way it's, it's written, and that's what, where our policies are. So, until we change those, what we're asking for is the money sooner, in an effort to not delay applications because of collection issues.
And again, we will, we'll adjust based upon an application. For instance, the Bank of America application, Kevin and I have an agreement as far as who covers what, because there's some gray areas between engineering and planning, and Kevin and I have always agreed that he handles lighting. So, when the Bank of America application came in, it was only lighting, that's why he didn't get a report from me, and why I wasn't here.
Any other questions or comments? We've already asked for the public, we've gotten none, none, so the wording of a resolution would just simply be to, to amend the, the fee and escrow?
I'd recommend to the Township Committee that Section 182, item one, be amended from the current number to $1,800, and that resolution would be sent to the Township Committee.
Right. And just to reiterate, that, that's a good number, I mean, we, we said it was as low as, what, 800? And as high as 4,000?
Six, almost 1,400 was the lowest that I saw prior to...
And the highest was 4,000?
Uh, the, the highest was almost 4,000.
Yes. It was, it's, it's, it was determined that it was a fair number. It was debated, and it was decided it was a fair number.
Okay.
The exact number is really closer to 2,000, but we determined that 1,800...
So we have the wording for a resolution. Do we have a move, a motion on it?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, very good. We have a second?
Second.
Call a role, please, Nancy, on this?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalker?
Yes.
Mr. Sandow?
Yes.
Mayor Schuler?
Yes.
Committee Man Ray?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hans?
Yes.
Chairman File?
Yes. Thank you, and this will go forward to the Township Clerk right away. And this will go forward to the township clerk right away, right? They want to, they want to discuss this tomorrow night, township meeting?
That'll be up to the mayor.
No, probably not. All right, I'll bring it up at the next one.
Okay.
I don't like last.
But at least it's available. So, good, good. Next on the agenda is new business. We have any new business items?
I guess one thing is the master plan committee. I think, Nancy, we're scheduling some meetings starting next Wednesday, I think February the first, following a very similar schedule as last year. So is that the first and third Wednesday for most of the months of the year?
I was advised we did not need to publish notice on the master plan committee since it is an ad hoc committee. But I want to confirm that and I'll provide once the list.
Could you repeat that, Nancy?
I was told that we don't need to publish notice on the master plan, it's not a formal notice meeting because it's an ad hoc committee.
By notice, you mean the 10 day notice to papers, et cetera?
Right.
I think that Mr. Vice Chairman Hans is talking about letting the public know that these meetings are happening through notifying the clerk, posting on the bulletin board, that kind of thing.
Oh, yes.
Not illegally.
Oh, yeah. Informal, yes, the, the dates are ready.
Did we, did we publish notice of the master plan committee meetings last year?
The calendar was, I don't know where it went, I know that the calendar was prepared and distributed, but I don't know these numbers.
Well, it's definitely online.
Right.
But thereafter, I'm not sure if it went anywhere else. It's definitely on the.
But since it's a.
Township committee calendar.
But since it's, it's a, it's a public meeting, right? Dealing with the master plan, we want to make sure the public is aware of it. So you are going to publish a calendar then in advance, right?
It's, it's.
Yes.
It will be on the township.
It's ready.
Okay.
So that'll be the first and third Wednesdays of every month except July, August and December.
Correct. Fundamentally correct.
Thank you.
And if I could add, the master plan, I'm sorry, that's the master plan committee, the ordinance subcommittee which met last week also discussed public meetings at length and have come up with a calendar for the year, and they will be publishing that calendar through the township clerk and on the land use bulletin board, as well as putting it on the township website. So it will be noticed. In addition to that, the meeting recaps will be sent to the planning board.
And in an effort to, to, to follow through on what we talked about at the last meeting, the ordinance subcommittee met twice since the last planning board meeting, we met on the, on the 17th of January and we met again earlier this evening. We changed the name to the ordinance committee as opposed to subcommittee. We began a rewrite of the, of some of the procedures that Mr. Sandow and, and others had commented on, and so far we have worked on the procedures and definitions, et cetera, for the site plan waiver committee, for the applicant, for the pre-application review committee, which we changed the name from application to pre-application, and also started to work on the technical review committee. We expect those to, work on those to continue, as well as looking at, at reworking the entire, you know, wording for the, for the, for the process. And we will bring those to the planning board as, as one document right now. And we'll continue these reports, you know, as progress is made.
And, and congratulations on the promotion from subcommittee to committee.
And we got a pay raise there.
But the, the one thing, could we, could we also have kind of in advance, is there any way, they're public meetings, the public knows what's going on, but more of what will actually be discussed, at least an agenda that could be, that could be put out in, in advance? So that, you know.
Yes, Kevin did that for the, for this meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, and those were put out on the website or?
No, not yet. We just adopted that, so.
Okay, so.
Happen from now on.
Right, so, so there's going to be an agenda in advance on the website, okay, great.
Any other committee reports? Like township?
I don't think there's anything to report from the township.
We're discussing the permanent sign ordinance tomorrow. We had it as a discussion item at the last meeting and ordinance introduction is tomorrow.
Just as, as, as a, as a question mark, I know, in last week in the newspaper, there was all this, you know, announcements about the New Jersey Supreme Court had acted on Fair Share. Have we, have we heard anything further from Fair Share and our negotiating group?
Our negotiating group did meet with Fair Share, but I'm going to plead that I can't say anything yet.
It's work in progress.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll speak to Jack tomorrow and.
Okay.
We'll make an announcement there if, if Jack says it's okay to let us talk.
Okay.
It's still, unfortunately, still negotiation.
Well, I didn't want to, I didn't want to ask a delicate question, but, but I know it's been a, a lot of people who ask me, well, what's, what's happening since the, since that was splashed all over the newspapers?
Yes.
You know, like, are we going to have to build 4,000 units now or whatever?
Mayor, Mr. Henry had asked a question about that, I sent an answer out, was that sufficient for you or did you need anything else?
I did not see it, I'm sorry, so.
Okay.
Nor did I see his question about it.
Okay.
Should I resend it to you? Or you may?
No, just give me a chance to take a look at it.
Okay, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, so no other committee reports, no other new business?
While we're on the redevelopment zone, is there anything more on that at this point or we, is there anything that we need to be doing or?
Nothing is, nothing as yet, we're, we are waiting on.
The, the, the RFP went out again with an extended deadline date. The feedback we had the last time around, why, you know, some of the companies didn't do anything because the window was too short for them with the holidays, they didn't have time to get everything together, so we, we put it out there again in the hopes that we get more responses back.
Yeah, and I think.
In a month, I think.
In a month, yeah.
January 31, I think.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So no further committee reports, let's move on to the, the next to last item on the agenda, which is questions or comments from the public on items that were not on the agenda this evening or have not been discussed. Igor, do you have anything for us? Okay. No, okay, have a good night then. I thought you were coming this way. Having no, no comments from the public, have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned. I was trying to beat you, Ashley. I was trying to get the second before you.
I'm going to give it to you.